Let's pause the June 14th meeting to order at, you know, five. Garrett, if you could please start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic of Christian hands, one nation, under God, and for the soul, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we will roll into our acknowledgements. Dr. Will?
Yes, so today we have, first, I'd like to acknowledge the students that have contributed to the artwork. And we also have DECA students here that are going to, we're going to be honoring tonight for their awesome performance in the National Conference and other places. But before we do that, if you look around the room at the wonderful art, each, each month, we have had the honor of having the artists from Talon Public Schools really adoring this room. So tonight, the artists we are celebrating are Namar Melendez, Andy Hampton, Sadie Barnes Bernardo, Benjamin Berry, Aria Leiker, Leggeta Loga, Adeline Nelson, Hamden Kirtel, Dominic Uche, Zachary Zablansky, Angelina Melnick, Annika Sprague, Emily Turasif, Grant Yow, Emily Zakara, Eleanor Rogan, Claire Emmerer, Kenzie McLanion, and Gideon Morgan Waintrum. Good job, everyone, and thank you so much for turning us on. Second, tonight, we have the awesome pleasure of having this bridge here. And how about this bridge? Would you like to come up and introduce all of your?
So this is our biggest year ever. We did absolutely amazing. And I know, Jayden, you're going to be reliving all of it. So for his benefit, I would like to reread the statistics that I do every year at our final meeting. That kind of tells you what we've came from, how long we've been around, and where we've ended up. So this year, we have been a club for just 11 years, 11 years. In those 11 years, we have had 241 state finalists. Yes, exactly. 141 international qualifiers, which is 27% of our club. 14 international medalists, 10 international finalists, five international champions, two international scholarship winners, four gold medal certifications for our school store, 14 Connecticut DECA state officers, and five DECA Connecticut DECA state presidents. So in just 11 years, it is amazing to see what we have been able to build from ground zero, literally nothing. So I'm very proud of everything that the kids have accomplished and everything that they have done. They have really come together and they train one another and they prep each other for the next year. Even this year, when we had our, our officer selection scenario, the seniors choose the following year's officers. So the outgoing seniors pick the incoming officers. So we actually had 14, 15 students vie for office this year, and we selected seven. So we have a very exciting slate of seven officers. But for tonight, the celebration is about these guys because they have been doing an amazing job. I would like to introduce them back. Lori Nesbit, who has been traveling with me. She is kind of, actually is acting like our co-advisor for DECA. I've been dragging her around for the past, I don't know, six, seven years to all of these overnight events. And she comes to every week, to every meeting, and helps orchestrate all of the great things that we do. So we had this year, 14 students go to the international competition. The ones that are not here, I'd like to say who they are. And then the ones that are here, I would like them to come up and introduce themselves, let you know what they accomplished in DECA at the international competition, and then also tell you why DECA is so important to them. Right? Okay, so in third place, we had Leah Walsh. She was a senior in quick serve restaurant management. Fabulous job by Leah. Third place, we had Nate Pulis and Chase Sapiri, who actually got third place in sports and entertainment marketing, but gave up that competitive spot to compete for the school store, which they ended up with a 92% on their competition score at the international level and probably just missed a stage fight. We had Patrick Coffia, also a senior, second place for personal financial literacy. He was with us. Second place, Sophia Cunningham in hotel and lodging management. Second place, Antonio Rhodes at entrepreneurship. These are the places that they got at the Connecticut State Competition, which enabled them to compete at the national level. We also had in first place, financial services team was Julia Volier and Amelia Lutzen. And the rest of them are here and can introduce themselves. So we'll leave it up to you guys. So Garrett, would you like to lead us off?
So as Miss Bridge said, I'm Garrett. I compete in automotive services management. It's a marketing category, and I won first place in Connecticut and went to international competition. And DECA is important because it provides like interviewing skills.
So hi, I'm Josh Reed.
I'm Suwan.
And we competed as a team in.
Hospitality team, services, decision making.
I think so.
Yeah. Hotel and lodging sort of stuff.
Yes, I made place first at the state competition.
Yeah, this is our first year competing together, and it was just a super fun experience. Just like prepping together and like getting to know how to present better. And the improvement that we made, like, I'm just so proud of us. And I love DECA for all the people I've met and all the connections I've made.
And not only the all the knowledge ability that has helped this game, but also just the memories that we made, like being in Orlando and sharing some unique things that all of that people are just, it's an opportunity that I would not miss for.
Suwan is our president next year, and Josh is our vice president next year.
Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Jude Regan.
I'm Jackie Sterling, and we competed in marketing management team decision making this year.
Yeah, so actually, we came in third in the state, but kind of had a comeback coming in second in the world.
Like DECA, because compared to, you know, Middletown, Jayden, I'm sure knows about all the prep they have. It's literally embedded into their curriculum, having a DECA class. And we don't have that here at Talon. However, our statistics, statistics, excuse me, show how well-rounded we are as students, considering we're able to apply that not only in the classroom, but also outside of the classroom at these conferences.
Yeah, so I also love DECA because it provides such real world ubiquitous skills that we can use anywhere that help across the board.
Thank you.
And Jude actually received our first international test score medal this year, so we're getting proud of that.
Hi, I'm Sam Nussbaum. I'm a senior. I'm a vice president this year, and I competed in business finance series. I placed first in that, the state level, then placed top 10 in the world. DECA has been a big part of my life for the last four years. It's given me a lot of opportunities to grow as a person, as a student, and as a leader. And without DECA, I don't think I'd be in the position I'm in today, you know, heading into college and heading into the world. So I have, you know, Miss Bridge and all the kids I've met in this club to thank for that, and I wouldn't trade that experience for anything.
We had a very successful year this year, getting multiple people up on the stage to actually win what they call the DECA glass, the trophy. You want to see a bunch of kids go absolutely crazy, jumping up and screaming, and, you know, you're, they're basically receiving their medals and their trophies in front of 20,000 people. So it really is a very big deal. So I'm very proud of them. They did a great job.
Curious, do, for you seniors, like, is this something, then, whatever your category was, will you take that up in college? You know, or not necessarily major in it, but just is it something you want to pursue?
Yeah, so for me, I'm majoring in marketing at Ohio State, and so it really propelled me to do that is obviously DECA. But I also feel that with marketing, you can pretty much do that in any business you're in. So obviously, it's a very useful skill, and also it's building my background knowledge for hopefully business law in the future.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I competed in finance. I'm studying economics next year, so I'm closing off.
Very nice. Thank you. Congratulations, all of you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, then we need to stand up and give them a. Yeah, why don't you guys come over here? We'll move out of the way, and you guys can take some pictures.
You really have the dream team right here.
I feel like that. What do I do?
One, two, three, DECA!
All right, give him my phone. Somebody.
Garrett's mom.
I'll take a couple. Are you ready? There, one, two, three, DECA! One, two, three, DECA! All right, one more.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming. Congratulations.
Hey, everybody, we're about to go 20 days, let's get this going. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 24. Any discussion prior to a vote? No, no discussion. Okay, well, then, since there's no one online and we're all in the room, all those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
That was everybody. So they are deemed as is. Okay, let's go ahead, and we will not do public participation because everybody left their room, and there's really four participants. Therefore, that's closed out. Correspondence, Jacob?
Yeah, three emails since the last meeting. We had an email regarding chronic absenteeism. We often felt that maybe the increased absence district is due to more illnesses or anxiety issues caused by the pandemic. We had an email with an article about how to utilize SIR funds. And we had an email from a parent requesting that her child be allowed to start kindergarten.
Thank you very much, Jacob, for that. Now we will go into points of information. So if you have any more numbers, have any questions, comments? Please do so now.
We're having that, like, the, the, for the child. Yes, that's the 28th, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Anyone else subject to that?
She and I participated in Brown's high school last week. That's excellent. We actually got to see a 20-minute presentation from, it's Bridge, there's the Bridge's room, and some other rooms as well. So thanks to the teachers and the administration.
Still waiting for cupcakes from the cupcake wars. Very fancy cupcakes they were working on and we were.
Which, I'm sorry, which class we said?
Culinary. It was like, we watched, we watched one kid do a presentation, run to the culinary room, change, and then do his cupcake course. Yeah. He said the cupcake course was more fun than.
I'm sure. Anyone else up this time? That was cool. I can go ahead and close up with points of information. Okay, we do not have our student representatives here tonight. That's all. Steady.
We do have gifts for them, though, so.
We do.
They don't come in the 28th, they'll find them.
We can drop them off. Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Let's go ahead and go to the monthly financial.
Okay, so as, as we do every month, this is the one of the final monthly financial reports for the year. We are now down, as of the end of May, May 31st, to 183,468, 63. It's 0.44% of the board's adopted budget. This is also the result of a, you know, a budget freeze. So we're at a point now also where we receive CS funds. And I am, as, as we had talked about before, Mr. Flores, as you know, so we'll be here for the June 28th meetings to have a year wrap up, which is one of the meetings in attendance. So he'll be giving an overview of kind of where we landed as of that moment in time. So we are tracking now, we're probably somewhere below 100,000 in the typical space where we would end a year. I think, you know, in a typical year, we're somewhere in that zone, which is a small percentage of the budget. And so we do anticipate being at that level. I can go over some of the highlights with, you know, fill me the stuff whenever you want. Salaries generally have been under because of the hiring for this year, as we discussed. Substitute code 120 is 54 over budget. We've been encumbering the subs to take care of things. We've had to use quite a few of them. Overtime, under by 31. Stipends, under by 31. Pay to play, wrapping up. Health insurance severance, employee benefits, which is 192210, are collectively over. We anticipate that severance, we have that severance pay and things that happen, we try to anticipate it as much as we can. Sometimes you get a couple of surprises at the end. Newly hired employees, retired employees, bike and med, social security, and CO220. And those when they retire, newly hired employees, retired since the beginning of the year, can change the value of that. It's currently under by 53. Retirement, of course, reimbursement and unemployment to 4250, 260 are all collectively under. There's been no significant unemployment claims, which is pretty good for the month of May. Available balance is 21,000. Benefits consultants and workers' comp balances to 70, 210 are under by 6,000. Basically, we uncover money at the beginning of the year to cover that. Professional ed services, 320. Again, this is where special education comes in. One of the lines, it's over budget by 179. It increased 65,000 since last month. Special ed needs are generally driving that, as we discussed before. Legal audit tech, 340, 350 are collectively over by 124. We've had a lot of activity, electorally and so on. We received a number of invoices in May for legal services, and so that's driving that a bit. Repair, maintenance, custodial cleaning, equipment expenses, technical expenses, 42430 will continue to be spent as the year progresses. It's currently under by about 65. Transportation, 510 is under. There's a positive balance of about 300 in the account. Worked with the transportation company effectively this year, as we have many years. So we're closing out EOs. I mean, do expect, you know, there, we're going to have some transportation. That's with respect to students and special education. So that leads me to the next line. Special education tuitions, 560 are over by 509,000. It's an increase of almost 10,000 from last month. Balance is going to continue to be incurred into the coming month. And the first payment of the STCG was received, which is our, you know, is our special education February and May, as you know. So we received both the first and the second at this point, and they're, they're part of this figure. Public safety, Memphis State Troopers, 590. We still have 46 because we haven't been able to hire that second SRO, although we've been trying more here to do that. We had a couple SROs that looked like they were going to make it to the end, and then actually they got snapped up by some of the other police agencies, one of whom we almost had done, and then Post, which trains the police, which we sent them for training, hired them. So we've had some tough luck with this. Energy, as you know, they're transferred at the beginning of the year. Textbooks are under budget by 46. Some of the things didn't go through, so we had frozen some of the things, so there's some money there. Instructional supplies, miscellaneous, some of that are over, which you kind of anticipated would probably occur. So the freeze did help us out. It kept us where, you know, having a good balance, as you write, and the end of the year, 183 is actually pretty good for May. And, you know, we expect to end the year with a positive balance, that then you can decide whether you'd like to move over to TRF or not, whatever portion is back. And it'll probably be within the range that we've been typically used to, somewhere under 100, you know, from the 30 to the 70.
Any questions? Go ahead, just a quick question. So I know you're probably running out of time, but with that little bit of balance left over, are you gonna try to buy, say, like, some of the textbooks or anything that you kind of put a freeze on?
Paper, you know, that kind of thing, because that costs is looking like it's going up. We'll get, we'll snap up as much of the supply stuff because that can offset some things and stuff that won't go bad. And there's some things people have needed. So we'll just, all, all of the things that are going to hopefully help us. Because next year, I think we're, we're going to have a tight year, so this will help.
Yeah, any other questions?
I mean, one quick, just update, tighten on the solar project. We've been waiting to.
It was, I didn't even know that was an option.
I didn't either. For all intents and purposes, though, I really mean it's over till August. So we'll, we'll keep working with the town so that we can have the PPA and license agreement ready for you if, if, if this comes to pass. But, but it would have to be, it would be August before we engaged again.
There's one thing I could say. Moving on. To the legislator, let's get that.
All right, so, so at this point, as you know, the Communications Committee has been working hard on a letter to the legislature, legislature and legislators, Senator Gordon, Representative Acton, Representative Ichio. Essentially, the Communications Committee talked about, you know, the broader things that need to be addressed within the legislature with respect to some of the legislature's practices. And those practices, you know, every year, we talk about unfunded mandates. And frankly, the bill that's, the budget that just passed has a load of unfunded mandates again. And, you know, it's just a very frustrating thing to, to watch happen. And so the Communications Committee and its wisdom, talking and relating, went high level here. And so the big three are financial and logistical requirements being included in legislation. Without the legislation, having public hearings, because sometimes they don't. And sometimes they don't consult with superintendents or board to that about how this impacts anything. Okay, so that's one of the biggest frustrations is even in some of the stuff that came down. If you do something simple, like mandate that a certain personnel member has to be in certain meetings, now that personnel member is no longer actually doing the job they were hired to do. They are now mandated into meetings. That happened in this, you know, recent bill. There's many things that, that affect us. And as you know, I had communicated at least 10 that would locally impact us, and many of those went through. So we do have quite a few things that we're going to be, you know, needing to adjust to. And this is one major thing, every single year, that seems to be, you know, hitting the individual municipalities because they don't talk to boards and bad. Sometimes they don't talk to superintendents or CAPS, and they go ahead and now just, just move this stuff through. And it's not helpful to, to, to communities, as you know. The number of bills presented, there were more than 3,500 bills. So the question is, how do you actually do due diligence on 3,500 bills? So the overarching thing that the board wanted to make clear is the number of bills presented are so numerous that elected officials do not actually have time to review them in due diligence. And so if they can't get a comprehensive understanding, they're passing things they haven't fully understood. It's not, you know, it's no, how could they? I mean, honestly, how could they? So this is, again, saying, we feel like this is a problem. The new, and then finally, as we've said before, the numerous unfunded mandates that continue to grow despite prior pleas from across the state for better oversight and consideration of legislation that has financial implications for municipalities and school districts, and they continue to increase the burden on the tax base. So these are the big three, and then the paragraphs below it actually go into more detail about each of the big three. So for instance, in this case, it talks about, it talks about that, you know, the legislation passed is a collaboration between the leadership of elected parties that doesn't always have public hearings or consultation with stakeholders or in selective meetings that do not include an option to bring in the feedback of interested parties is problematic because you're not really going to be able to then execute a bill that has the greatest chance of success. So, you know, when they omit consideration, that impacts the implementation of the legislation, and it creates hardships and financial impacts. And we know that, and we're seeing that, and the newest stuff has that. Currently, the second paragraph there covers the overarching bullet two. 3,580 bills were presented for the 2023 Connecticut General Assembly session. So we respectfully suggest that it's impossible for lawmakers to process this number of bills, and we're concerned. Finally, it goes into detail, and I'm going to have to update this a little bit. Some of these, you know, passes, some of them are slightly modified, but if you pass this letter and you want to forward it, I'll make sure that I update those from the bill numbers, because some of the bill numbers and some of the things get updated as you go along. So I'll have to make sure, for instance, if it still held that name, Bill 929, et cetera. But it had an articulation for the third point up here for, you know, here are examples of at least 10 that are going to impact school systems and municipalities in a financial way that we could not possibly have prepared for. So the Act concerning transparency as potential cost to school districts for implementation of the revising of charts of accounts. We're probably going to have to assign staff to that or hire, you know, people to do some consultations on, on things to make sure that that gets done. An act expanding meal programs to provide free meals to all students. So that one, you know, I don't think that did pass. But the point is that in that analysis, you know, when all adjusted, that was going to have an impact. An act concerning carbon-free requirements for schools, that did, and that's going to create a need to, to allocate resources to that. And that is something CAPS actually put out a document on showing that it was going to have a huge financial impact. An act implementing recommendations of the Juvenile Justice Policy Oversight Committee requiring significant additional reporting on an already existing report. So requiring the assignment of staff and loss productivity. When I do certain reports to the state that are mandated, I can be on that phone for four hours. And that's not an unusual thing. We can, you know, sometimes we get on there. I've actually sometimes left work, and I've stayed on the, on the hold with the music for four hours, and I would go home, 7 o'clock, it would be 10 o'clock before the person picked up and we started talking. And I would be at home at that point, you know, with the headset in, that plugged into the wall so that I could, you know, they finally got to me. That is not unusual. And so anytime there's increasing need to report, mandated reporting of a certain methodology in kind, it costs that your staff is no longer going to be doing the other things you want them to do. They're going to be having to, to do the, you know, new reporting requirement. So an act implementing indoor air quality, that's at least 2,500 per school. So in a school district like this, you're looking at 10,000. 10,000, you're not going to spend on other things, and that we couldn't afford, you know, for, for whole. An act concerning the use of certain products, maybe Polystreem. Now, you know, we do support wanting to update and get away from things that would be environmentally hazardous. However, there's no help for you here. So we're going to have to replace all of that, and that's going to cost money. And that's your, that's money we hadn't been prepared to, to do. And so there hasn't been a conversation about how to best work that in. I think OFA said that the cost statewide will be 2.2 million to 2.8 million dollars. An act concerning the Title Nine Compliance Toolkit. Again, Title Nine, you know, we have a process, we know the process, but now they're going to have additional reporting. And Title Nine has a lot of reporting to it, so I, I, we're not sure exactly why there would need to be additional reporting. But now that means that those are hours of time that will be done in a certain way, you know, take that away from staff and the other things. And every one of these is, you know, again, just a little bit of, a chunk of the people's time that you hire. So they no longer have, now if you think about PPTs and expanded reporting and, you know, additional costs and additional requirements. They're not doing the job you hired them to do, they're doing more bureaucracy, more paperwork, more things like that. And there's no consideration for how to help you with that. So we're not hiring more secretaries to handle it and you're not getting a point five administrator to manage while they're in PPTs or out of heat, you know, doing things that they're required to do. So that means they have less time to focus on issues at hand and then, you know, you may get more emails from community members frustrated. Because X, Y, or Z hasn't been done fast enough and that's because now their, their, their burden has become even bigger. Because you can't be out of compliance with the state, you have to do all of these things, they take time. Various revisions to the statutes for compensation for educators, this is a huge one. It's, it's, it's gonna cost this district quite a bit of money. There's mandated training now, at least eighteen hours, so I'm having multiple meetings to try to figure out what we're gonna do and how. When you think about that number of people and then having that without any assistance from the state, you know, there's some, I guess, money here. That they're diverting, diverting to it, but that's not going to probably land for talent. And so at this point, we're already, you know, looking at costs that we didn't anticipate with respect to. You can't just bring them in, you know, and just say, here's a PowerPoint, people have to design the PowerPoints or you purchase the PV. Like it's, there's a whole layer on top of what, you know, you have to do here. And that's gonna be at least eighteen hours for every single individual that we have to plan, create, or purchase. So that is not a small thing either. An act concerning the recruitment and enhancement of the teaching profession. Again, it's just that there's a lot of things that we do already, team and team mentoring and things like that. Team mentoring, there's stipends that we received some money from the state for, but not, not all of it and definitely doesn't cover everything. So now there's increasing, they're increasing some of the additional things that we're gonna need to do with respect to that as well. Which is gonna ultimately have a cost for us, so, you know. These, these man, these laws. We'll go through and make sure that, you know, take off anything that didn't go through, but they're examples of just every single year, there's stuff. Every single year and so, you know, as soon as we get the final analysis, I did put a legislative update on the board's dashboard. A day or two after the budget passed and it also highlighted for you some of the additional areas of, you know, that financially we're gonna get. So I'll use that, modify this to anything that didn't pass. And then ultimately, if the board approves it, we can send this on to our legislators. Making it then generalize to all budget sessions as well, because the budget session has been. So again, it wraps up with the unfunded mandates and a paragraph or two on that. I'm talking about how the value of the dollar has actually decreased, as you know, so a dollar back in two thousand and six. You know, dollar fifty seven, I think, right now purchases what a dollar purchased back then. So a twenty million dollar budget is actually equivalent to a forty four million dollar budget, but you have a lot more things you have to do now. So you, you've gone backwards because you're, the value of what, you know, that dollar buys. Your, your budget is about the same as a two thousand and six budget at this point from a value perspective. But there's so many more things you have to, you have to take on. You know, almost two decades. So. So that's kind of how it wraps up and then it has, you know, the big three again to be stated. Please input public hearings, get all stakeholders in there, please reduce the number of bills under consideration. Please reduce the number of unfunded mandates, they have to set up a process.
Okay. So I have to digest and so, did you want to add anything else that you worked on that?
Thank you, Dr. Willet, you put in a ton of work with us, we had multiple meetings. Actually, I think this started with us from you, very early on when I joined the board. We, Dr. Willet, has educated us in meetings on so many of these mandates and the implications. And I just, I think the, you know, which is, we really wanted to focus on process on this. Because it, it's, it's not so much about what each individual mandate does, but it's about what it costs and the resources it takes. I think so often we hear, you know, people say, why do you spend money on that? Why do we have that in our schools? And I think that there are so many things that people don't realize that are state mandated, we, we have to do that and. You take something as simple as the polystyrene one, it seems simple and it seems understandable to replace the polystyrene, but. That's a lot of money that we're not accounting for, that all of a sudden we need to prepare for, so. I think it's great to, to talk about publicly, number one, so that people understand that there are just so many things that, that districts are held to now that are state requirements. But that also, we just say that this, the process by which they do this is crippling us, we don't, we don't have it. Now, again, thanks to Dr. Willet, he did a ton of work on this.
So I think it's a pretty good, good letter, you know, certainly. So the, you know, your time making sure that it's, that it's good, you know, and I'm impressed by it, so I guess, you know, my, my suggestion. Yeah, because I don't, I don't want it to get mired at our level, I'd love to see this sent out to our legislatures, would just be. Yeah, I think it's great that we're sending it to our representatives, but. When we send this out, could we also ADCC, like the, the committee chairs that are responsible for passing a lot of this legislation? Because I know, like, I, I know, you know, our, our representatives and the good news is that for the most part, they tend to be. Against unfunded mandates, but the bad news is that. A lot of other legislatures, you know, obviously aren't or they want to be passed, so it'd be good if. I think it'd be nice if we could bring it to their, their attention, you know, as well, but. Other than that, that's really my only thought, you know, I think it's a very important issue and this letter articulates it pretty well and so. Good job to you and Sophia and Dr. Willet for working.
I like that suggestion, I'm sure they have a listing.
Yeah.
Committee chairs and stuff. Hold on, get that CC down there, I do like that idea. Go ahead.
Then I know I've mentioned it, but I mean, again, first, good job for the committee that. Absolutely, I like the direction you took, rather than focusing on any one thing specifically, looking at the process. But to your point, I'm sure there's a lot to digest here and I recommend that we make this the first read. So that we can really read it and maybe jot some notes down before saying yes, we are pulling with the passing it on.
You know, my only concern is the timeline for it to get into. The legislation and also, you know, kind of have to. I mean, I didn't dive into all what's happening, going on and everything, but you guys. You're, as a committee, did the work, so I kind of feel like by not taking more time to.
And I guess, I mean, if one of our points on here is that there's, you know, we're concerned that there's so many bills in our legislature, legislators. Doors aren't having the appropriate time to consider it. I would then be hesitant to try to push our doing, but without adding appropriate time to consider.
I don't know, I'll lose everyone else.
I, I do agree with Tony and I also would like to see, maybe if we could do a second read. I know Dr. Willet just mentioned that some of this stuff has already changed, so since they, they're out of session now. I don't want to prolong it either, but they are out of session, so I think we have, you know, we can push it back at least another couple of weeks. Yeah, it would be.
My recommendation is do two readings, just being the first one, but like, let's try to get it on the second one.
I'm conflicted because, sorry, yes, yes. I'm conflicted because we do a lot of the stuff in our respective committees to, to bring to the board and. Overall, which I had second, this has been brewing for a year and a half. So, and I guess, I mean, I, I really don't know what we can find tooth comb other than just having correct whatever numbers are supposed to be on there. But the gist of the letter is, I don't think there's any premise of the letter that changes on how we feel about the requirements or what's being asked of. But are what we're asking our representatives, I don't think that changes. Like you said, the, the numbers may change on some of the different, you know, line items, but other than that, I think the gist of the letters from us, this topic. Right, from what we're requesting, so I don't, I don't see that changing, so I don't see the need to, the way that for long. I mean. That's, I mean, they did their due diligence in their respective committees, but during this letter, Dr. Willet pulled a lot of it together. If we went through and fine-toothed combed every single thing, I don't think we would have found this one.
You know, but the, it is a point though, there are gonna be updates to it. So I definitely, you know, maybe we do just put this into the board action, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it if everybody wants to digest it a little more, I don't think, something, I mean, I appreciate that you guys. Feel confident and we did work on it a long time and it was, things kept changing as well. There were different mandates, so I'm fine with that, I mean, I think. It, it needs to be updated anyway and Dr. Willet wouldn't mind tweaking it, maybe could reach it and, and if no one has it, it doesn't sound like anyone has any. Big concerns with that, maybe we can do a very quick read and pass on the twenty eight. Just to kind of cut it off, but give everybody a chance and if there's something that you're not up to with, you can always email, ask a question, talk to Dr. Willet.
Nope, I think that's fine, I did have a question. In terms of the first one, an act concerning transparency in education, just for what the unfunded mandate. Because I know like even the auditor cost an arm and a leg to come here for like half an hour, it was something crazy. How would that be impacting on changing the charts and that perspective?
Well, that is, is very impactful. And part of it is us trying to figure out exactly every place that it hits, it's just more, it's gonna take more time. More people and we don't have a lot of people, you know, so that means that everything else is pressed. Probably will have to spend some money on, on applying, on compliance, you know, to, we can't not comply. So it's, it's just, it's been seen as, and I don't have a figure for it, I'll try to find one, but all the districts know this is gonna cost us some. Significant costs because you're gonna have to, you know, implement either hiring or giving people more time to do it. Which will probably cost us more money or, or. Not us.
Okay, fair enough, okay, so why don't you post the new updates with what you have? So that we can have time to review for next meeting and then we'll just put the, on the other board action and get this put out and done. Committee in liaison reports at this time. I'm not sure, we have a lot that happened. Yeah.
For continuing parent negotiations.
Correct, that is. Person's report, I would just like to make sure that we congratulate all the students for graduating for today and tomorrow. I really absolutely love seeing all the eighth graders, this will be the different perspective, seeing all the seniors graduating. So it's gonna be. To see that regression, see it. Yeah, I mean, this is a crazy time with all the end of the year activities, but walk through that stage and get diploma. It'll be great tomorrow. Hope everyone goes, it'll be fun. So, but once again, and like all the kids that are struggling too, that did not get student on the bond or did not get. You know, half back, we have to make sure that they understand that it's appreciated for what they put time and effort into and, you know, everyone really deserves the. Good congratulations for what they achieved personally, because there are a lot of kids that I feel like just kind of fly under the radar. They just put their head down and do stuff, but yet they're not getting awards or anything of that nature, but we have to just ensure that. All the students understand that they're doing a good job, doing the best they can. Um, we're actually, we have done public participation, oh, that's right, we have done, okay, bits of information, anyone else, go ahead.
One quick thing, I attended this last week, the spring sports awards night. Absolutely phenomenal, I just want to thank Dr. Willet and Mr. McCloskey for making that happen. I mean, that's something that I think I started asking about before I was even on the board event. And it was, I thought, absolutely perfect, they did a great job and it was just really nice to honor all of our athletes. Our student athletes for academic, you know, purposes as well. Just kudos to everybody for making that happen, it was, it was really great.
And I'm sad that I missed it because. Yes, but I heard great things.
This was the first year they did a, I believe, a fall, a winter and a spring and he broke it up into. I think he did like two sports at a time, each coach said something and then he brought up all of the kids who got. All academic awards, then he had a special section for the kids who made all conference, all state. Brought them up, I, I think there was a photographer, Dr. Willet, I don't know where the pictures end up.
Yeah, we'll post.
Okay, but, and then you broke off and went to a designated section in the school. And then the coach, each coach, I'm assuming, I obviously only attended tennis, but gave out certain awards. Gave out the varsity letters, you know, and all that, so it was, it was perfect, it was really well done, so I was just, it was really nice to see after. Inquiring about this for quite a few years, I was glad that, that Mr. McCloskey really, really stepped up and made it happen.
Are we going to be honoring Mary Grandi separately for retirement?
No, that, the, the admin are going to honor her and take her own.
So then I just wanted to bring up that tonight, one of Mary Grandi's last ceremony as principal. She said she's been principal for seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years, so, you know, I think what's really evident about Mary is that she genuinely, she's a kind person. And she genuinely really cares about the kids, so it was really nice to see her tonight. She has a tendency to get emotional, she held it together, but you could tell how much it really meant to her, so congratulations to Mary.
Absolutely, and also she was saying too that, for thinking that she was excited that for us to have her.
I was wondering if she was.
She was there. But, you know, it was, that was a good ceremony tonight.
Sister Spangle, I, I ran into him the other day at the school and he said that she's actually taking, because Mary's end date is. I think Melissa's end date at where she is, so she's actually taking some of her vacation days. From her current job to spend time with Mary before she leaves because they will overlap, so I thought that was really great.
That's exciting.
Yeah, I wanna, I thought what Jen said about Mary, it was, it was great, the ceremony was fantastic, of course, in front of us. She did, I, she kept looking at Savannah, the, you know, and I think they both kind of broke together. It seemed like they were together to get courage and do that, to go through the process of their speeches and I, and what have you. And every time I've seen her, I've seen that bond that she has with the students, it was evident, again, we did the rounds, I don't know, a month ago or. So, so she will be missed and, and it left her, maybe we'll, you know, the case was something she said. But overall, the, the promotions there was fantastic, the course did great, band did great. I don't know if you've noticed, but there was a student conductor before anybody came in. And it was just a really great ceremony and I thought it was very interesting, the engagement that we all had with each of the other students. Like, they're so, they're young adults, they're, they're young kids, like they're still figuring out things and so it was just great to engage with them. I'm glad Jaden was last in line because, you know, all the hugs and the high fives and all that, but overall was, was so fantastic. And I just want to let you know, Dr. Willet, the parade through the schools was phenomenal. Um, and I just want to let you know, Dr. Willett, the parade through the schools was phenomenal. Like, that, I, that is just the coolest thing in the universe.
Well, yeah, we, we taped it.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay, we did this.
It's so cool. Like, like, they're like little celebrities, the seniors going through the schools, you know, walking through their path, which I think that's a fantastic tradition.
Kids can see where they're headed, you know, and teachers see the kids that they have in kindergarten, one, two, and three, it's just great, you know, it's great. Well, you've got a good job to the high school, and everybody that comes.
Um, and Mary Grandy just texted me to say thank you to all board members for coming to her event.
Watching it on, on home, on her couch at the TV. That's how she's spending her day. Okay, um, I think you're.
I'm sorry.
Go for it.
I'll keep it short. Uh, Mrs. Bridge earlier with her group, and none of them are here, obviously, but she mentioned a number. That number was eleven years. Eleven years, all of that has happened in eleven years. And as much as students are involved in, in working, you know, their tails off to, you know, receive those, um, get those accomplishments, um, complete, um, she works her tail off. I mean, every day of every week of every month, uh, for her students. And I still feel that four years removed from the high school. And so, you know, she, there's a reason she's been our Teacher of the Year nominee before, um, and, and qualifier. So, um, just huge shout out to Mrs. Bridge, and Miss Nedwick was with her. She's there with all, on all the trips and whatnot. And so I know we'll see a bunch of them tomorrow night, but, um, just a special shout out to, to Mrs. Bridge and um, all the teachers and, and professionals in our buildings that, that do these clubs and extracurriculars, you know, help kids like myself. So, uh, just really cool. Really cool. I had a smile, and then we started talking money, and then we got back to graduation, so my smile kicked out. But very quick, so thank you.
Perfect. Okay, at this point, I would like to, um, entertain a motion merger.
Motion merger, second.
All in favor can say aye.